Nothing. Nothing. Come on this way.
Oh, a little chilly for me. Yeah, and I think it's gonna get worse.
Yeah.
You can't say that.
Wednesday.
Yeah, actually, you're right. I think there is supposed to be a little warm up and then cool down again, but...
No, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
One five foot storm. Yes. Are you, you're not gonna be there?
Oh, yeah.
No, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to get my nuts as fast as I can. And then I was gonna go back and...
Sure.
Yep, thank you.
Are you, oh, so you're painting, so, yep. I didn't know if you were reciting or not.
No. You didn't say anything.
I know, Scott.
Oh, not too bad.
Oh. Yep.
Did I say that?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Yep, well, at least it's permanent. There you go. So, did you, do you usually play? No, but did this time? Yeah, same here. And did you buy one ticket or? Okay.
When did they start doing our ball? I didn't say it's sad. Yeah, you used to always be...
Oh, could be. I don't, I didn't even buy my own ticket, so...
When did they start doing Mondays, too?
Oh, I don't know.
Because on the radio, the day that lady said...
Yeah, it's three days a week. I always thought it was a Saturday and Wednesday.
Wednesday and Saturday, he used to be. Now it's Monday, Wednesday.
I don't know anything about it. The girls wanted to know if, if we should be getting involved in this thing. It's getting high enough now. It's like, well, it was high enough before for me.
It was, it's almost two billion now.
Yeah!
What do you have to do with all that? My, my wife keeps saying, "I don't know if I can let down." I'm like, "Well, then go away."
Yeah, we'll see ya.
We'll see ya. I'm gone. Here, I'll give you a couple million and then I'll take...
Carrot with your neighbors.
Yeah. I told her, I said, "I'm gonna have to build a big building to put all my toys in."
Multiple, multiple buildings.
Multiple buildings. It's gonna be big. Do you think, uh, Ferret saved his job by winning Saturday?
It didn't hurt him any. Jeez. They looked good.
Yeah.
In fact, they looked better in the first half than they did the second half.
He, he, uh, the, he didn't throw the ball very good the first half. He was throwing it too hard and kind of lame, but... But no, I wish you guys would have beat Texas.
Me, too. Oh. Yeah.
Boy, that's one team. I, when they go, when they go to the S C C next year, they're gonna find out what it's like.
Oh, you ain't kidding. Yeah.
Because my, my nieces go to A and M. Have you seen how A and M is?
Yeah.
They, they skip Big 12 like A and M. They, I think they won three games this year.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Did you stay up all night watching that game?
Which one? I, well, I still stopped, but I, I didn't see the end of it yet.
I, my wife goes, "You watched that whole game against us?" I couldn't fault it.
What do you want me to? I don't know.
Well, it's odd.
That was a great game.
Yeah, I tell you what, that was, they were hitting.
Oh, yeah.
I said, I told my wife, I said, "Travis Kelsey, I bet you he's..."
He's a little sore, yeah.
Guess what I said?
He had to be tired, man. I tell you what.
They were working.
Well, that, that one, the end phone where the guy tackled him and they didn't call pass their first D N, I'm like, "Just do the...
Yeah.
He even was rolling around trying to get up.
Yes. Hey, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Somebody used to, he's not 25 million. Paul Allen Obama.
Oh, sure.
That athlete, he was all pro right there. Okay, I just stopped it. Cody's...
I left them my board.
Okay. I tell you what, they, they don't, they didn't have anything for receivers, really. They traded that one guy away, the, uh, Eagles.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he's got, he's, he's got more touchdowns than anything.
Yeah, isn't that crazy?
I don't know if you know for real, though, you look at who they play.
How are you?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I enjoy the Packers.
Hey, Carol, how are you?
Yeah.
That's always good when you see. Aaron Rodgers get found.
He looks like this.
You're not a Packers fan? Oh.
So, they're trying him? He does have...
Too bad, my dad's still not liking a big Packers fan, and I could give him the... I think they're for real, and they picked up that kid pretty good. Or Iowa. Did you? Yeah. He's, he's good. Man, that was... Couple of years ago, they were, they were Linton Cousins up there.
It's close. Thank you.
Well, Brenda, how are you? Kelly, was that your big boom today in Hubble? Was it a boom? There was some down pat in the air, the ball and whatever they're called.
Thanks again.
This morning early, and I didn't think it was you guys, but I don't know if it was, I don't know, I hate to guess, but it was way up there.
It wasn't us.
Okay, well, I can hear something, you know, where there was... Been busy, huh?
Janice has been busy.
Yes.
She's wearing her fingertips out.
She is, yeah. Janice, good job.
Yep.
Hi, Janice. You can come and sit by us, or...
I'm surprised, I mean...
I'm just reading a little bit. All right. Two pages, wow.
Yeah.
Yes, good deal.
It's been a busy day.
Yeah.
I can see that. Well, this is our Walmart stuff. Hello, Steve.
No.
Most of what up this time?
Yeah, yeah.
I liked that 30 last year.
Yeah.
We can really tell everybody, but we're at 2.4. Sorry to mess you up, but I think that's where we're at.
2.4, what do you mean by that?
The deductible.
Oh, uh, 2,000.
Okay. All right.
Four, I see what you're saying. 2,000, 4,000, yeah. Hey, how you doing, John?
I'm good. I'm watching your shirt. But I'm right here.
How are you? What, no, what?
I guess I'll love it. You have to be there? I'm leaving town at 7:00 AM, but you gotta be there by 9:00? A little after nine. And where are you going, Sam?
Usually three hours, but it...
Figure just hit myself in time because I was rushing. And it's not, it's like a cross. Okay, you're going to the other one. Yeah, so I just wanna make sure I got it.
Yeah.
If I'm in the wrong place, then they can tell me.
Well, they've been doing some construction in there. Right, parking is... Sure.
You don't miss something, and then I know I need to have a couple correct.
Yes, there you go.
They're so good.
Are they?
Wasn't you?
Okay.
You look beside him, Rick.
I see it in the paper, so. Good day.
Sometimes.
Tell me now?
Yeah.
You can figure that out. I had a, that's what I use every time. Sometimes you... I like seeing... Does it stop? Huh? What? Stop, stop.
It might need to be better.
That's not lasting very long, though, which is a big flaw, but... All right.
Yeah.
Would you overwind?
This is the one.
All right, it's 5:30. Call meeting in order. Let's start the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ball, please.
Yeah. Okay, um, Steve Heron.
Here.
Gerald Honka. Jay Jones.
Here.
Lexi Murphy.
Yeah.
Jean O'Ro.
Here.
All present.
First time on the agenda is to approve the agenda for tonight. Do we have additions, changes, corrections, modifications? Any thoughts? No, then?
No.
Anyone else have anything? Anyone have any changes, corrections, additions, deletions? Maintain motion to accept it.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for November 7th, 2022.
How seconded? Motion I G, seconded by Carol, to accept tonight's agenda. Any further discussion or questions? Fall favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Not opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Your first number item is two out of five, the first minutes. I think we have October 17th and the 3rd in here. I noticed that there was some doubling up on the minutes between the 3rd and the 17th. Looks like four of the items on the 17th were already posted on the 3rd. So I think we just have to correct it and... Let you take care of it.
What was duplicated?
Motion by Murphy to the spring de-application, that was on the 3rd, that was on the agenda, the motion for the $50 was on the 3rd, the motion for the bright energy was on the 3rd, and the change to for the employee payday. So, I just kind of... So, anyhow, please, delete those.
Bring it in.
Fix it, we should be good. I didn't see anything else.
Can we get rid of this draft on the paper? It's really like...
Distracting?
Yes. Yeah. Sure. I think she's heard from us on that before. Sure. Uh, okay, so removing on anything on October 3rd, first of all? I see nothing there unless somebody else did. So, on the 17th, the last three items, four. Call four, they have three duplications now. Yes. Start with that one. And after, and still in records rule. The end of that, all right? So, do I need to make a motion to just for those corrections? Yes, please. Okay, we can make those corrections on the 17th. For the minutes.
Those are the last four that were duplicated?
Yep. And that's the last four. Removing else, Carol has made the motion. Does anyone have a second? All seconded. There's Jean. All right, we have a motion to second. Any other discussions or questions? Anyone else see anything else that is duplicated or admitted? I guess we'll see if it was admitted. Who is on favor, say aye. Accepting the minutes with the corrections as noted, say aye.
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 Not opposed, say nay. And carry. Paper planes, press, pink paper. Just a quick work of Scott and Janice here. Anything you want to point out on here? I see another turnout gear on there, and that's so good. That's the new three sets, was it?
Two.
Two sets.
What? The sewer repair. Why do we have to take that? Because we're the ones that wrecked it when we pulled that line under the road.
We pulled the line?
Said you did.
Set that right next to it.
Those are, aside from, uh, tear up, make the street.
You will see that library board of trustees on page two, third one down, that's, and that's on your agenda for later to make that transfer. I thought that was only 8,000. 2,8737.
Last two years, we've always paid 9,000. You have the hundreds correct, but since you paid the last few years, or last few quarters 9,000, that's what I paid him.
Oh, okay, she told me eight. She said it was the same as April.
And we paid him 9,000.
Well, mine said eight on my minutes, so that's what I went by. I can't tell you, I mean, I don't know. And she quoted that, and she called me on the phone. We'll let her investigate that before we get to that. Yeah. Somewhere that map will be confirmed. Should we have approved it? Well, actually, I don't even know why we have to approve it, because it's already in their budget, but I know we have on the resolution, so... Transferring. I mean, yeah, maybe it's just a doubling up, but I don't think you get a... Thank you for the reservation. Yep, approve the transfer. See, we've got the tip rebate spent on there now.
Yep, and those get paid.
Any other questions?
I stand corrected. The last two times was 8, 7, 3, 7, 50, and the four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 times, before that it was 93.
Yeah, I only looked at the April, and that's what she quoted me over the phone, so...
It can be crazy.
Yeah, because you've still got... Eight seventy outright, because we sent him a check. So, okay, save this while we helps. And maybe once we get them included with us, we won't have to do that. Correct, yeah. Sure, that would be good. Then we'll just pay their bills.
Um, front page, page one, about two thirds of the way down, Department of Energy. Eat, purchase, current, there's...
Nothing.
No amount there.
Can you see it?
Page one.
Yeah, I see it. It's like it's... Oh, okay.
Energy.
Purchase current.
And what's that, what's that for?
You know, Scott, Janice?
No, I don't.
Janice, Janice, Department of Energy, we got no dollar amount. It says purchase current.
Have we got one?
It says, here, I'll show you.
Well, that's a, I'm sure that's an electronic payment.
Maybe that's what it's gonna be.
Is that what it means? Electric purchase, something.
Scott, do you have them an alphabetical order?
They're, they're close. I don't have them.
WAPA or M R S, one of the two, or maybe both.
Then they're automatic.
They would be.
Yeah.
Because we may do an alphabetical order.
Oh, after we did it, sure. But these are not... This is Department of Energy.
It should be the same thing as therapy there. Yeah, it's the same thing. It's, uh, electrical. It's where I get some of my electrical stuff from.
I can't tell you what that is because we haven't paid them or did anything with my five, six, or 22. I think it's a computer error that it just printed there.
Okay.
All righty. Now I can check, uh...
You wanna just check into that maybe, or?
Well, I just checked into it.
Oh, okay, so five would have been May, maybe whatever that is was May.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Which it should be checked into, because you guys paid it all last year every month.
We did every month last year.
Ah, so I will, I will check, or Scott will check into it for you tomorrow.
Okay, sounds perfect. On the list, Scott, huh?
That's right.
It's commodity for, for resale, so I'm guessing that we're buying it just from a different vendor, but we will check it out tomorrow.
Okay, sounds perfect.
And it's electricity.
What was this Michael construction paid for $3,000?
My guess is that's...
For the one at theater?
The theater.
Western grand.
Oh, okay.
It should be zeroed out, probably. Do we pay that vectors, I'll walk it, monthly? That's 6,000?
Yearly, I think.
Huh?
I think it's yearly.
Well, I thought we paid him not very long ago, around 6,000, so I don't know.
Which one?
Vector. That's a safety thing, isn't it? I did, I thought we paid him not very long ago.
Is that for, um, like that, from N C C, for her to come here? Is that who that?
Yep, it is. I'll check that, too.
You facing away from me, I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Last page. The vector, that 6,000 something. I was thinking, I'd seen it on a claim not too long ago, but I don't know, 6,419, but it's vector, Eric Chad, Cleveland. Maybe that started the new fiscal year or something.
This is from 12/1 of '22 to 12/1 of '23. I can check to see when we last paid it.
Okay, I wonder, yeah, maybe we were late paying, because this one would be early then, right? A little early.
No, we're November.
Oh, it's 12/1. But I know I've seen it. But I know I've seen that number. Maybe we approved it and it's just coming out now, maybe.
We paid dues on nine twenty-seven. And that was split five ways for six thousand two hundred seventy-nine. This is, this is the commercial liability insurance. Those other things were dues.
Okay. And how much was that one?
Four hundred fifty-nine forty-five this month.
Okay, that was a dues, and then our other one, what's the, six thousand was for the yearly thing, right?
Twenty-two, twenty-three dues.
Okay.
For six thousand two hundred seventy-nine. And then we have CPR dues, that was also paid in September of a hundred and forty dollars. And it matches up with what we paid last year.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, we're paying this one in November.
Now, so many questions for these items. We'll make a motion for the payment of claims. I always make a motion to do payment of claims. Do we have a second?
All second.
Seconded. To approve claims as presented tonight, all in favor of doing so, say aye.
Aye.
Sam, o, say nay. Aye, motion carried. I will sweep the.
Should have a paperclip packet in front of you there. This is the renewal for the health insurance. First page, just kind of give you general information. We go to the second page. On the left-hand side, tells you what you currently have now. The policy's renewing January first, and this is what it's going to. Benefits are the same, but the premium's going up by seventeen point one nine percent. So if you remember, last year, we took a huge decrease. It was about, it was like thirty-five percent decrease, and then now we're going back up again. We go to the next page. Kind of tells you the areas. More demographics, which would be age, gender, that type of thing, and your pool that you're in took a little bit of an increase as well. So that's kind of the main areas of where it's coming from. Here's, if we go to the next page. Yep. Here's where it shows what we've had for claims. So you can see, last year, claims were down compared to what we've had this year. And then on the bottom, it shows major claims, so they're ten thousand dollars or more per claim. Last year, we only had one. This year, we have three of them.
Are you able to tell us what they were?
No, I.
Like that, like two persons, that's.
Yeah, they might be all from one person, they might be from three different people. No, no idea.
Okay.
And so getting some made bigger claims, obviously. It's about three-fourths of all the claims were those. So that's the reason it's jumping up a little, so. We go to the next page, tells us who's on here, and I know it's not correct as we stand here today, but it was correct as of when this was printed off, so. So bottom line is there. Total is twelve thousand seven hundred dollars per month, kind of a number to remember here, is where it's going to go to. If we go to the next page, and several pages thereafter, but the next page, I highlighted where you're currently at, so it kind of compares it to, and there's several pages worth of different policies or benefits that we can go with, even if we stay with the same policy. Just kind of gives you an example. Currently, we're at a two thousand dollar deductible there, per person, four thousand per family. So keep in mind, a couple of years ago, we raised that up. We used to be five hundred, we raised it up to a thousand, then we went to two thousand, so that's kind of where we're at now. And like I say, the next several pages are options you could go to. If you go to the fifth page from the end, kind of go backwards, five. I did, I did quote it, so this would be Obamacare. So just to kind of compare, which, once again, we're kind of comparing apples to oranges here, so it is not, we aren't even the same deductible, because they don't have that deductible with Obamacare. So I, the first one there, that enhanced three thousand, that would be a higher deductible, higher, more out-of-pocket for the employee. The next one over, the fifteen hundred, would be a better policy deductible-wise, but actually has a little higher total out-of-pocket, actually quite a bit higher. So one's a little better, slightly better, one's a little worse. The bottom line is, both of them, even the better policy is, or even the worst policy is a little higher premium. So I think we want to stay where we're at. The question is, do you want to keep the deductible and that type of thing the same? To me, that would be your question that you need to ask, so.
Right.
Okay. I've done all the talking. What questions do you have? Kind of went through it quick there, but.
Is this something we have to do tonight? Can we talk, like, look it over?
Definitely, yeah, look over, uh, we just, if you want to make a change, we need to do it by December fifteenth, so we have plenty of time here. And, and there's a lot of information there, especially if you want to look at options.
Okay.
There's a ton of information.
Right.
So I don't know if you have a separate committee for this or whatever, but if you want to meet again, I'd be happy to. Or if you want me to come back at your next council meeting and do that, I'd be happy to come back for that, too, if you have questions, so.
And we'd also have time if we did it that first weekend.
Should we just have you come back the first?
First.
One in December.
First one, yeah.
Yeah. Have you had a decision by the.
I'll talk to Scott and find out when that is, and yeah, that'd be before the fifteenth, for sure.
Yep. And we pay fifty percent, or you don't pay any attention to that?
No, I have nothing to do with that. That would be.
And if we have any options, we can just call and ask you.
Yeah, so, yeah, in the meantime, before that meeting, if you have questions, give me a call, and then we can go through it, so. Yep.
Okay.
If we leave it the same, what's, what is it going to do? If we leave it at the, at what we currently have?
Okay, so if we leave it the same, it's going to go, that would be this second page where you have it now. So it's going to go from six fifty-seven per person for a single to seven oh seven, yep, right there. And right below it is the family, so that's sixteen forty-three.
Is that monthly or for a year?
That's monthly.
Every month.
Yeah, every month, yep.
And we, like, but the city pays for the full single, right, but for a family?
Is that correct?
Yes.
I don't deal with that part.
Fifty percent we pay of, you take the, you take the family coverage, you minus the single, because that is paid for everybody, and then fifteen percent of that is what they pay.
Oh, I guess that'd increase the.
Yes, so if they had.
Would be a hundred percent. The city's responsible.
We pay the five. The city, whilst we pay the single for everybody.
Yeah, I think we need to discuss a little bit.
Yeah, yep, look it over.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Do you also do the EMC insurance?
Yes.
Is it possible that we could get an electronic copy and then send to us?
Yeah, yeah, I assume.
We don't have any books or any, or do we, or what do we get for any of these insurances? Do you keep it all, or?
No, you should, for the EMC, you definitely should.
We just can't find the books.
Okay, not a problem.
Send me an electronic, or us, the city, an electronic copy, we can.
Yes, yep, yep, absolutely. Okay.
All right, so we're going to, item eight. We have the fourth ordinance which came in, and we have a copy in front of you. As well as the fees, which is later, but this first one is two pages. No questions Tish can answer, I'm guessing, or Ryan, one of the two of you?
It's pretty straightforward. It's out of, it matches whatever you have to do, they're a real specific to the city.
Yeah, I didn't explore outside the lines, I just.
And the, I mean, the ones I reviewed are all identical. There's no, they're just in them all.
That's what I found.
Well, I definitely think we need it, so you guys got something to work with if you.
The long and the short, it just adds a little protection to the city.
Right, plus you guys. Martin, what do we need to do to make this? First reading, set, uh, set here, or set up?
Public hearing.
It doesn't need a public hearing.
Doesn't, unless this is already in there?
Yeah.
Good. So that we don't have to do an ordinance?
Do a reading.
Or we don't have three visions?
We need three readings.
Unless you waive that.
Unless you vote by three-quarters majority to waive the first two.
First and second.
You got to do the first one.
Yeah, it's okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have to read it tonight, so whoever is up for that, reading aloud for us.
I can do that for now.
Thank you, Jamie.
Ordinance number twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash two, and ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Palena, Iowa, twenty sixteen. By amending provisions pertaining to the public order protection and law enforcement hazardous substance spills. Will be adding a new chapter six under title three to the hazardous substance spill ordinance, be it enacted by the city council of the city of Palena, Iowa, passed and adopted by the city, by the council of the city of Palena, Iowa on the seventh day of November of twenty twenty-two.
All right, so we need a second.
I will second that.
So we have Jamie and Carol, second, and we need a little call note. You ready?
All right. Steve?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jane? Lexi?
Yes.
And Jamie?
Yes.
First reading has been approved. Next, Jamie, for that. Okay, and the questions for our next item is, do we have required service fees, our resolution? There are two pages direct on that. We'll have to change the fees. To read that aloud for us and the official, and you're done looking at it. Do you have any questions for Ryan? I'm sure he can. He's brought this before. Haven't already asked your questions. You still can. He wants to read the resolution. Okay, I will read the resolution.
Oh boy.
Number twenty-two dash thirty-one, resolution change the fire department fees, be it resolved by the council of the city of Palena, Iowa, that the fire department fees will be billed as follows. Heavy response apparatus, three hundred twenty-five dollars per hour. Light response apparatus, two hundred fifty dollars per hour. Other response apparatus, a hundred dollars per hour. Response personnel, eight AM to five AM, five PM, two hundred dollars per hour, one hour minimum. After five PM and weekends, thirty-five, if you want to get rid of that hours in there, thirty-five per hour, two-hour minimum. Expanded materials, foam, containment booths, sand, absorbance, et cetera. Replacement cost plus fifteen percent. Damaged equipment and/or property may include injury to, destruction of, or loss of natural resources, et cetera. Replacement and/or repair cost plus fifteen percent. Other contracted services, contracted equipment, evacuation of people, et cetera, billed as used, plus fifteen percent. Passed and approved the seventh day of November of two thousand twenty-two.
Uh, bottom contracted services should say used plus five percent.
Thank you, that's what I was just questioning.
Okay.
Seven fifty-five.
Yeah, five percent.
And the five minute would be changed.
We have to do this one. Isn't that, how about that hours there, too? Thirty-five.
That's the one Tish brought to the others today.
So we don't have copies of this, or we do? There should be a long, longer version, sorry, the longer change. You still want to read it?
We already read it. Most of it up to.
Oh, it's just.
It just.
The longer change?
Yeah, you should, you should have the updated one from Tish.
That was.
She sent it over to me.
Oh. Okay.
It should be in there. Everybody's got my own words.
Okay, these fee services about you're talking.
This one.
Our service fees. There you go. Yes, record under.
Is it in the other, well, it was sitting on the table when you got here?
Yeah, I got it.
Yep.
Yep. So we want to redo this?
Just read the last hourly clock, because we build in fifteen-minute increments beyond the minimum of hour rate, just all you have left. You've read everything else.
Okay, where are you at? The very bottom.
The very bottom. Because this one says.
By other, by other at the bottom there?
Is that the only thing you have to do?
Yeah, that's the only thing, because you rechange the power unit and change the five percent.
Okay, this may include, but not limited to, other equipment usage, contracted services, contracted equipment, and evacuation of people. This will be billed as used, plus five percent. The hourly cost, do we have that?
That's what you need to repress.
Hourly cost will be billed in fifteen minute increments beyond the minimum hour rate rates.
I have a second.
You want to read the first two whereas's, we just got them all. Very top. Whereas, the top again?
Yeah.
The Palina Fire, whereas, the Palina Fire Department, also known as the Palina Volunteer Fire Department, provides fire protection service to the cities of Palina, Iowa, and surrounding townships, and whereas, the fees are a means of sparking the costs, making the fire department to the users of the department, and reducing the tax burden on taxpayers. And then I think we did that one, didn't we?
Yeah.
The rest was all done, we have. Yeah. So.
We're even.
Okay, so Carol has introduced the resolution, do you have a second?
My second.
Lexi. Any other questions, clarifications? Revisions? Let's call for a vote, all in favor of approving the resolution to increase fire service fees?
We need a roll call.
Yes, we'll have a roll call, sorry, yeah, we'll call answer permanently.
Um, Steve?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Lexi?
Yes.
And Jeanne?
Yes.
All eyes, resolution carried. And the next one is in your pocket with pictures. And we have a separate one else, we do. Boy, that's a state. And then after this, the paper that has the reading we need to, and by the address, just want to explain what this is all.
So. Some of you understand, and some of you probably don't understand our dispatching system. So when we get dispatched, dispatched out of law enforcement center, it's, uh, computer aided dispatching, so ninety-nine percent of their dispatching is all by address. And we get a lot of our dispatches through CAD system, so if there's no address, it can be difficult to figure out what it is. So I'm just putting addresses on common places in the city that don't have addresses. Like the tree dump, that we go to quite often, so.
Does it just come across as true? Does it just come across as true?
Yeah, so right now it picks up as miscellaneous or unknown address, and then we hear on the page tree dump, so. So yeah, it just clarifies a lot of things. Because, um, I mean, like Trent and Nate would know, and I know a lot of blocks by the hundreds, so you can dispatch it out as the Hundred Block in Main Street, but, you know, the common person would not understand all that, so it's just a lot easier to have an address. Because they type the address in, and then they'll give them a hit. If you really want all the information, they'll tell you how many times you've been there and all that fun stuff, so. So yeah, it's just clarifying some things like that.
I'll make the resolution of number twenty-two, thirty-two, the resolution to address in the City of Palina for nine-one-one calls. Be resolved by the Council of the City of Palina, Iowa, that the followed locations will be added to the nine-one-one calls, the South of Bryan Park, football and fields, the Palina City Park, Palina Youth, baseball and softball fields, Swanson Complex, City Lagoos, and tree dump. Passed and approved this, passed and approved this seventh day of November, twenty twenty-two.
If I may, and just one suggestion I have is maybe on the sewer ponds, just given the distance, technically Frick's Corner would be the five hundred east day, so maybe, I would suggest maybe go with eight oh four instead of six oh four. And then the other thing is, I'm kind of thinking, since we're doing this, maybe go ahead and split out the tree dump as its own right away.
Yeah, I'm, I'm opening for suggestions.
I'll pass that with Nate's corrections.
That was good.
Do you want to rewrite those down quickly?
It doesn't, it doesn't specify, um.
In the resolution?
Addresses on the, uh, resolution, so.
Just changing that, once he has, you know, everything figured out.
Yeah.
Okay, so Lexi has presented the resolution. Do we have a second?
I'll second her.
And Carol? So now, if we'll call vote.
Uh, Steve?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Lexi?
Yeah.
And Jeanne?
Yes.
Number eleven. Now, the resolution to change the date, um, utility auto, utility auto pay from the third to the, to the line of bill dates, we've had discussions on this before.
Is this like direct, like usually?
Yeah.
Like automatic payment, is that what you're talking about?
Right, yeah. Currently it's on the third, and we just want to try to get it closer to the due date, utility due dates.
Have everybody on the same.
Is this the official resolution number?
Yes.
It can't be, because it's the same as the.
Thirty-two. Let's go one before.
Same as the.
It's the same as one one.
I'll, I'll go back through and check those down.
Take the thirty-three. Depends if it gets approved or not, whether you, right, whether you're in there, worry about it, yeah. Do we know how many we've got, is automatic now, do you do it?
It was two hundred and some was.
Two hundred and forty-two. Okay, thank you, thanks.
And have you like contacted those, because you know, some people live off of.
I think you were going to try to put it on the utility bill.
Yeah, on the next billing, we were going to put it in that note section on the, just to let people know.
I feel like we should get some.
Because some people are budgeting, and if they're used to it being on the third, and we change it to the twentieth and what have, you know, that's just my thought. And I, I mean, obviously I don't agree either way, but I think, you know, people who are on the German, are already on.
But if they have, but I mean, if they have the money currently, you know, if they have it on the third.
They have it.
Yeah.
It's not like, it's not like we're moving it up, you know, from later in the month to earlier in the month. But no, we are going to put something on the, on the, on the billing card.
And then are we going to start it already in November, or are you thinking December, or what do you think, or wait on time?
Maybe even January, I mean, just, I mean, just get it out there, just get it out there first, and see if we hear anything bad.
That, that will help, if they start seeing it on their utility.
So maybe we should put it on the utility that we're thinking about it, we will recast it, because what happens if we get so many phone, what happens if we get, they get so many phone calls?
I think they're going to be happy.
I mean, we might get more people, but.
That's what I think.
You know, what I'm just saying, some people who.
Sure, right now we're punishing the people who are, okay, they're making enough theater bill, sooner than everyone else. Yes.
Yeah.
It's to their benefit, if they don't want to do it, they can still.
But some people who, you know, I don't know if they get their social security at the beginning of the month, and, you know.
Then it's all taken out, you're thinking.
Then they're all, it's all taking, you know, taken out beginning of the month, and they have to, I don't know. I don't know how such social security, you know, if people do budget differently or something, so then, like, we're used to the third, we get paid again. I don't know, but.
Because the bills are due on the twentieth.
Right.
Yes.
But if you have ACH coming out of their account on the third.
Right.
Right, that doesn't quite seem fair to those people that it comes out.
I'm surprised they ever did that. Right. But I don't know, we weren't around.
Wasn't that the complaint that we had, that it was.
I think that's why we're not getting more people, yes, yeah.
You can't, you can't give my bill before you.
Yeah.
Oh, that's why we said we had to make sure they got out.
Yeah, they, they got out.
By the first, otherwise you didn't even know what your bill was.
In the middle, in the first of months, most of the bills go up. Unless, unless you could do it like we do, you could set the bill later.
See, and all my people are.
That's what I do with my turn payments.
Why did it get on the third day anyhow?
No clue, I think that was before us, Steve.
Yeah, I know what.
Because we went and voted for it.
I'm curious why it got stuck in.
I have no clue, never heard.
I'm assuming, my, my guess is that, I'm assuming that's when like the elderly's social security comes.
Usually it's the first.
So that's why I'm just like, oh.
Don't have no clue, I know when we set ours up, they told us the third, and I said, you're kidding. And we set it up in the bank, they come in here.
Usually they're like at least, you know, like ten.
Well, and see, I mean, your TCA and all of them are the day that everybody else is due.
What would be the correct resolution number then?
I think it should be thirty-three, we're going down the line.
I'll have to, I'll have to get back there and look again, I thought I.
Should be, yeah.
Thirty-one?
Thirty-one?
I thought we had that one, you did. Fire service fees. So that's why we usually add the number based on what passes tonight rather than before, because if things get tabled, then the numbers are all up anyway, so. Well, he's a book ad in the book.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, when it, when it goes in the book.
Right, yep. So what do we want to do, just kind of wait on it, or put it out?
I think we need to get it on the bill and get what, and maybe more people like will sign up, or, but I don't know.
What do the newsletters go?
October number, it sounds like newsletter already went out. We don't, we'll do, I guess.
Well, you got, may I just have another sticker that you were looking?
Yeah, we've got one that'll go out this month, or on the next billing anyways.
Yeah, so. Well, last one I said it in November, December, or October number.
Type it on the card too.
Maybe both places.
Sure.
Yeah, and we'll get it on, we'll get it on the card.
Yeah.
I mean, that way everybody will see it, so.
Yeah, and then. Maybe shoot for Jan and Ryan, I get you two months of. Right, yeah, because they won't see it till the first of December, so.
So you want to just send the note out explaining?
We're going to change it.
I think we need to do the note, and then do the resolution.
At that point, just table this for now.
Table this for now.
And then save, yeah, and maybe we want to put a start date on here anyhow, as of January first of twenty-three. Yep. Okay, that'll give everybody time to.
So when do you want to table this, too?
December, maybe, first December meeting. Yep.
I'll make a motion to table it till December first, the first December meeting.
I'll second. Motion second by Lexi to table the resolution changing the billing from the third, automatic billing from the third to the twentieth. All in favor of doing that, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, say nay. All ayes, resolution tabled.
And then you can get, get the word out to the public.
Yep.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Then you don't worry about that super resolution number either. Resolution to approve a transfer of eight or nine, what do we decide, Janice, where is it supposed to be? Right now you guys said eight, that's still good? That's what they asked for, correct, Carol? Eight seven? Yeah, so if you're just going to fix that, right? For the library fund, you're going to fix it to the eight seven. Okay, claims, okay, so the resolution there is ready to be read, ready to read.
Okay, I'll read it.
Resolution number twenty-two dash thirty, resolution approve a transfer to the library board of cost fees for eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents from the general fund for library operating expense. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Palina, Iowa, to approve the transfer to the library board of cost fees for eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents from the general fund to the lib, for the library operating expense. Passed and approved the seventh day of November, two thousand twenty-two. Carol, do we have a second? I'll second it. Jeanne? So the resolution has been presented to approve and transfer to their, for their operating funds from the general fund to operating, to their checking account for operating expenses. Motion on the second, Carol, Jeanne, and I'll call for a, a roll call vote.
All right, Steve?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Lexi?
Yes.
And Jeanne?
Yes.
That's the one I was trying to go through.
Has he.
I'll start, I'll start on back of the list.
He's reading you first, yeah, you should, you want to change your last name, or? On alphabetical order?
I'm always last, Steve.
Yeah, she's always last, she's crying. Any questions, I'm guessing Kelly can answer some questions related to item thirteen, for the task order amendment to the DGR Engineering Faster Professional Services Agreement, which you have copies of. And this is all for the switch here, Kelly, they just first.
Yep.
When do they plan on starting then? Or when can?
Starting, what do you mean?
Like doing?
Starting billing it?
Doing it.
They're going to start engineering it, but it's going to be, I mean, it'll take at, at least a year from getting some of this equipment, if not longer, so. It'll be a process. This right here is to. I mean, you guys have already approved to go forward with this, this is just the agreement between us and DGR.
When did we approve that, I think I was gone that meeting. Do you know, or no? I was gone in August, so maybe that's what it was. So now we have the official estimate, of course, and clear the time in there, and it will take minus the additions they may need, if they want to.
I only think it wasn't September when we did that.
Really? I don't know, I, I was gone in August, that's, so I thought maybe it was that one. What, I suppose we need to go back more than all of this, in the book? In the book, in the book?
And we're just going to pay this all out if you elect it, if we have it, right?
Well, but the rest of it's a lot.
We'll see how much it is.
This is just the engineering part, right?
Right.
I don't know what the end.
It may be good.
Well, you gave us an estimate, like, like a million something or whatever.
Forty-four, I believe, something like that.
Quite a bit, and then what we need to do, I know you said we had dollars, but we still want to do it, we don't want to wipe everything out. Do we want to do a bond issue, or will we have to do that, talk to hours and coonie and?
I think we have the money to do it.
Right, but we want, you think we still will have extra, we'll be okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Because we don't want to wipe it all out, because then something else will be.
Yeah.
What does this personal, well, I guess, what does this personal grade mean, like, per hourly rate, you know, with the?
Personnel?
Yeah.
Generally, either organization.
What they get paid?
So they get paid as a helper.
Any other questions, Kelly? Let's go through the task order amendment to the DGR Engineering Master Professional Services Agreement. I'll make the motion. Motion by Lexi. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean. To approve the task order amendment to the DGR Engineering Master Professional Services Agreement regarding substation fifty. Switch gear replacement. All in favor, is there any further discussion or questions? If it's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All ayes, approved. All right, item fifteen. Fourteen, right? Fourteen, oh yeah, there it is. Fourteen, the Gaden, the big Gaden with the certified mobile crane operator telescope and boom, day training. She seemed to have all the information about, and I understand you would get re-certified and staff to that, correct?
Well, it's something we have to do with, when we have a, we consider our digger Derek a crane. So we have to take these classes and be certified. I am currently certified, but I am gonna have to take one of these in a pressure courses and get re-certified. So I figured that Kaden get his done first.
And when does he go?
November fourteenth to the eighteenth or something.
Does he drive a vehicle or do you get the same?
You can do either or. I think he wants to drive his personal vehicle because his parents live an hour away. And I think after he's done with classes, he's gonna go down there, so.
Okay.
For the weekend.
I'll make the motion to approve Kaden to attend these classes, and then Jean.
I'll second. Motion out, by Lexi, and second by Carol, to a good game for this crane operator training. Any other questions or discussion?
We have funds in electric for the car for the training, so it's already set aside.
And he's not re-certified, he's just getting certified.
He's still not certified, yep.
Why was he never certified?
Yeah. We never, we never used our digger truck until we got this one, so.
Yeah, it was red tag, it was, couldn't use it.
Okay, so motion by Lexi and second by Carol to approve Kaden for this training. Any other questions or clarifications? If it's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All ayes, approved for training. Now, item fifteen. Your parents, say throw it away. Set the resignation agreement from police officer Trent.
I just made the link out myself.
Well, it's been a pleasure to work, work here, but you know, I, my life is in there. Wasn't an easy choice, and wasn't really looking, I just got a really good opportunity, and I love that.
We will miss you.
I saw you guys take, I'll be around on the move, so I'll leave my honor. Something comes up.
So if we call Shelby and say we didn't approve, then you're done, you stick around, right? That's not how it works?
Well, it works.
Well, if you're bettering yourself, that's the best.
You're the best.
You betcha.
Appreciate that.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation.
Against my better judgment, says with resignation.
All right, motion by Carol. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Jean. Accept the resignation agreement from Officer Morton. Any other discussion?
I don't, I'm gonna just say one comment. Try, I know you didn't want anybody to know, but I was very not happy when I found out by three people in the community before I, since the council was in charge, before the council was in charge. Yeah, before the council was known, like. I had people calling, it's like, is this true? I work, I work, and I'm like, no, you don't, thinking I would, if you have a council, I wouldn't know. And I get that you didn't want anybody to know, totally get that. And it's just hard when the council's in charge, that we need to be like.
Yeah, and it wasn't. Because of it, it was like right after council.
Right, which, right. No, that's not your fault, like, just people in the, in the city called needed to just even, and then just give us a quick call or a message saying, hey, just.
Well, I think, I think he wanted, did you hear what he said?
Yes, I get that, because the council's in charge, so how, how, how is that?
Yeah, but he didn't want people to know, us to know, or something. What was the reasoning I heard? That there was something that he didn't want some people to know before we did or something, or something. Right, yeah, I wanted the, I wanted the council to know first. I didn't, I didn't want it to be the reason that.
Right, right.
Right.
And, and you know, we just live in a, we just live in a small community, you know how things.
That's what I mean, yeah.
We get, things get out, which I totally get, so it's just, it was very like shocking when I went, when three people came, it's like, did you know? I'm like, no, you don't think, being on the council, I would, you don't like, oh, I bet you that's not true. A small town rumor, and then a few hours later I find out it is true, so then I just kind of felt kind of.
I know, I was trying.
Right, totally, yes, I totally get it.
So you asked first, that was kind of more than that, but it.
And it doesn't always work that way, I get it. I was just very like, oh, telling him it's not true, and then a few hours later I find out it is true, so.
Just tell them, I don't know.
Well, that's what I did say.
That's the easy way to do it. Thank you. You can't have everyone.
It was that friend who.
I never heard that.
No, right, who was that?
So I suppose we'll have to do some putting out. Yeah, I'll vote here on the list. Oh, okay, sorry. It's all right. Motion by Carol, and second by Jean, to accept his resignation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. Speed to you. November what?
Can you go via lash?
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Yes, thank you for your service.
And then we will have to put it out to look again. Nate will probably want to write up the big one pretty soon. Job search.
It should be on file.
I'm sure it is. We've done this a few times.
Do you want to share with everyone about the twenty-eighty and how that will be impacted?
Oh, just, we were talking earlier, you know, the twenty-eighty is set up for, you know, mutual, we work there, they work here, back and forth. Since he's going to the, you know, that's, so, okay for a while, but he's going to the academy, I think it'll start in January, about three months or whatever. So I don't know. They, I haven't heard anything from them on what they're thinking as far as coverage over there. It may not be in January, one either. Oh, no, okay. Whenever he goes anyway, what, if they approach us, typically in the past, not that I'm super inclined to take both by myself, but if, if that's the way it ends up in the past, what we've done is, for me, and for every day we cover over there so much. If that comes up, I don't know what their plans are.
Will O'Brien County help you some?
No. Nah, I mean.
Because they did some, but no.
If we're, yeah, I mean, they'll cut, they'll help on any emergency, but if, if they approach us and we enter an arrangement with them, that'll probably be pretty much all I need.
Thank you. Yes, if further questions or ideas, I'm sure Nate would be willing to hear them. All right, moving on, item sixteen, city chamber website hosting. Earlier this week, had a service disruption apparently, and it's been restored. Again, the last we spoke, I think the, the hosting was paid up until April seventh, twenty twenty-three. So just clarifying that that was still the intent. So the website should stay as it is since its current iteration until that date, correct?
Yes.
Wait.
Please. He's the answer.
Hosting is not management and maintenance of the website. They're separate things. We don't host. We can, we have server space available at a pretty nominal fee. Like everybody else, I mean.
So what are you doing for your, what do you call it, maintenance and management?
Mm-hmm.
What would you do then?
Well, we were on the agenda September sixth to give the council an entire presentation of our proposal, and then we weren't. Here we are.
Your proposal to take it over from him?
No, that was a private sale.
Doesn't belong to the city?
Doesn't it belong to the city?
City paid for services and the domain and?
Domain doesn't. Domain, you paid for a domain yearly.
And so what year did you stop?
And you stopped paying me in August.
Untrue at this point.
And I already paid for it.
When, when you set up the domain, John, did you give us a bill for that domain?
I always give you, I give you a bill every year.
We bought the domain.
No. I give you a bill every year. You don't buy a domain.
You rent it.
You rent a domain.
It's annual.
You go through ICANN. ICANN does that. If you forget to pay ICANN, you lose your domain. And that's it. Then you can hope to get it back. You can go to a, you can go to a auction, or you can go buy it back, and the domain might be worth a thousand dollars. You don't want a thousand dollars for it. But you still don't have, you still don't own it. You control it for another year or two years, or whatever you want to pay the rent for, up to five years. But that is, is that. So then, the domain, the domain was paid by me, and I want to say June or July, I paid that. I presented bills to you guys, and you decided, not you, she decided that wasn't gonna pay them, so.
Every million presented has been paid according to our claims.
Now.
So where is that one in there? Why is it not paid now?
I always took it out of, I always took it out of the fifty dollar a month fee, and then I would bill for that later. But you quit paying me the fifty dollars a month, so. And you also voted to sever a relationship, illegally, I might add, but you still did. And it's still in the minutes that you severed relationship with me, so.
So you're holding hostage with the URL.
No, I'm not holding hostage, I just made a.
So you, so you lied to us then.
What?
You lied to us.
No.
Yes, because I had you on Mary as you recorded, you sitting there saying, well, fire me, then I'll just transfer over the domain and the website to you.
I don't think so.
Yes, you do. It's on there. It's on Mary's thing. It's on her YouTube thing. You're sitting in your pajamas down on that end, right where he was sitting. You said that, I'll find it, I'll find it in my phone, you know, it's in September meeting. You said that to us, John?
But, and you did, right? I won't even go with that. I won't even, I won't even argue with that. What I'm gonna argue about is you voted to sever the ties, and I wasn't even on the agenda.
Okay, correct, that was.
And you, you voted to do that, and that's never been corrected. And it's in the, it's in the, it's in that, that was an illegal vote, and you billed it in anyway, so.
Paid you up to the date. Up to every bill that was submitted was paid clearly, so.
So he missed billing you for the domain rent. We bought it, it's ours now.
He missed it, okay. That's an oversight. That's too bad. So now you want to try to sell us back the domain that we?
No. No, we want to maintain management and provide good internet services.
So we're still paying him to host.
Pardon me?
You're still paying him to host.
You've already made that. You got it?
Till April, then what happens?
No.
Then, then?
You have hosting space available through April. All hosting spaces is a house. It's the house. We do the furniture. That's, that's the service we're prepared and providing, just like we do for ourselves. Every website out there pays somebody rent to park their information.
Right.
That's the hosting. Somebody else puts stuff up there.
So if we don't ask you to put stuff up there, then we're good till April, is what I'm getting at?
No, we can move it.
No, that, that's, what you're saying is.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I misunderstood the question. It can stay there till April. Unless you don't want to pay us for managing and maintaining the information that's on there. If you choose not to enter into a, an agreement with us, and actually ours is in writing, then we'll move it. The space is still yours, and we'll do what we choose with the domains.
Domains plural?
Yes.
What domains do you own from the cities?
We bought a bunch that had nothing to do with him. They, we're not charging you for those.
I'm asking for the cities, what are the city ones that you?
The city is.
PolinaIowa.com and PolinaChamber.
PolinaChamber is PolinaChamber.
It's the subdomains.
Yeah, it's a, it's just, it's just on that space.
So that's, but we also, I think, I think for.
You on that domain now.
Yeah, I think you, yeah, so, I don't know, I'd have to provide a list of what we have. And actually, if it doesn't affect you, I may not. I don't have to.
I don't need the other ones, I was talking about the city.
Pardon me?
Where the site existed previously.
The site still exists in the same location. The domain that has, that the city, as I understand it, has paid for historically to John, that we bought from him, is PolinaIowa.com, correct?
Yeah.
You said PolinaIowa.com.
And net. And dot net, yes.
So you haven't lost your web, you still have a website.
We did yesterday, but we do today.
Well, things go out.
And actually.
Hosting is tricky. For our management, it's tricky.
You made a comment, John, it might have accidentally go black sometimes.
Just went down and then came back up right before our meeting today.
It's all recorded, John.
So, okay, well, that, that's, I don't know if it was enlightening to others, but we do have some material that's.
So, so the host, so the host is, if I understand it right, the host is like the structure.
Host is parking lot.
Is the space that your information occupies.
So you, so like if we want something on the website, that's what you do?
Yep.
That's hosting or that's not hosting?
That's not hosting. That's the management and ma- maintenance.
Okay.
All the hosting is, is somewhere out there in, I don't know, the deserts in Nevada, or the city in New York, I don't know, there's a, a big empty warehouse that's just filled with big giant computers, massively computing. Those are servers. You guys rented a little big space on one of the discs on that server. That's hosting. So anybody who punches in PolinaIowa.com or does a search and clicks on it, their computer connects with that spot on that server somewhere in the world. That's the hosting. Everything that goes on it is your information. At this point, it's your information. At this point, it's your information, as you choose to see it.
And has anyone asked you to update anything currently?
Nope. All we've done since we purchased it is, is put the minutes that we've gotten up. We had not done October yet, other than that. All the minutes are up there. That's the only thing we've been provided of.
So...
Or asked for. And actually, it wasn't asked for.
Didn't ask you to do that because we didn't know you had it. We understood.
But you was, were you given anything, John?
No. If you gave it to me, I had to tell them.
Pardon me?
So then we wouldn't have any charges, am I stating the obvious?
No.
Hosting. Hosting paid for. Don't ask for anything happening. No bill.
You paid monthly for the management. You paid monthly for the management.
We did when you had a contract that wasn't in existence.
Right.
Now she's trying to take over.
Now you're paying her. Yeah. Now you will be paying.
But there's not a contract.
There will be.
There's an implied contract. You have implied contract.
I think we have a lawyer here getting fancy.
Okay.
What we need, so then what we should have is a person designated to communicate to the person managing the website?
Can we do this? Can you guys put us on the agenda for your next meeting? We will bring our proposal in for the council. Answer, and it'll be Dick and I both. He's more techie than me. John can join us because he knows the current thing. Richard's familiar with it. I'm not techie at all. Answer your questions, share with you what we had originally intended, amend it, and then reach some sort of place where we go from here.
Sure.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Sounds okay. Can you also put a dollar amount on that domain so that the city could actually own it for the year that it...
It can be part of the discussion.
Because otherwise, you're going to keep doing this, and you can raise your rates as whatever you want. Maybe held hostage, correct? To that domain and that site.
It's, I don't think it would be appropriate to just raise our rates anytime, anywhere.
We have no commitment to that.
You would?
We would have no protection against that.
Yeah, you would.
A contract, yeah. A contract should take care of it.
But you're going to keep the domain, so the contract is only for your hosting and your...
We aren't hosting.
Sorry, posting, not hosting. He's posting. You're posting.
There's, it's, the agreement was pretty involved. So I'd rather just wait until it's here for everybody to hold on to. I'll, I'm even happy to distribute it before the meeting so that you guys can look it over and come up with your questions.
That'd be good. Yeah, that'd be great.
Let's put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Put it on the agenda. Yeah, talk about it. Bring your stuff so we can... I'll provide a copy to each of the council members between now and...
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds perfect.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Number 17, response to dismissal for cause appeal. Should we want to strip this? What is required of us?
Yeah, I mean, I think for tonight's purposes, you're under step two of the grievance procedure. And so the council's supposed to review the dispute and determine if it's warranted or not to meet an executive session. So I think the council can determine that they approve the action taken and don't feel it's warranted to meet an executive session, or they can determine that they want to further have discussion on it and meet an executive, this executive session and go from there.
I, I think we need to meet. That's just my opinion.
What would the meeting do for us? What, I mean, what are we, what would we do? We discuss what happened?
I mean, so the grievance procedure provides that somebody who is under, disagrees with the disciplinary action can present that to the council, which would incent a letter to the council. And so then the council has to review the dispute and decide, do we approve and we don't need further discussion? Or do we think it's warranted to have an executive session meeting in which we meet with the parties to the dispute? And if they want to bring witnesses, they can, and essentially hold a hearing, meeting.
Not like a special meeting?
You could say that it's just a special meeting.
A closed session?
Yeah. A closed session has to be requested by the employee, but, yep. It, it can be part of a regular meeting. It can be a special meeting. It doesn't need a notice for it. It's just a determination of whether or not the council feels that it's warranted to meet an executive session to review it further, or if you feel that it's not warranted to do that, and you approve the action taken.
We need to make a motion on that.
Yes.
The executive session can be held whenever, anytime?
So it's supposed to be within 15 working days of Whitney's letter. It can be held anytime. You'd have to publish notice, just like you do, but it could be a special meeting with 24 hours' notice.
But it would be a closed session then, right?
She would have to request it to be closed.
Okay, okay. Otherwise, if we have it, it would be open.
Correct.
Okay.
Motion by Lexi.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Steve to respond in a, to review the dispute in an executive session.
Yeah.
And that has to be by the, oh, I think, well, it's five days. I thought it was by before this weekend.
Yeah, I think we're getting close. We have to have a 24-hour...
It's 24th is when we got the deal. It's just dropping Wednesday or Thursday or...
Have to look at calendar. Because it's working days, because I was counting right, but it's working days. So from the 24th to the 25th.
Yes, to get the same better order, right? Thursday's out for me. I think the 14th is 15. Maybe go from the 24th.
So it would go next week.
Day on night? That's the night.
Unless we go this week, yeah.
One's staying. 10th is out. We just determined after the...
Yeah, I don't know if that's to be part of the motion. I think you can determine when and as long as it's published. I mean, posted notice, like you would in a special meeting.
Since we'll be 7:00 p.m. tomorrow night. Yes. Okay, so we've got a motion by Lexi and a second by Steve to an executive session regarding the dismissal for cause appeal. Do we have a call for any other discussion? We can call for a rev, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Opposed, three nays? So the motion fails. Yeah, aye, serve to you two. Okay. 25th, 18, Veterans Rights. That is the paper you have. They're asking for awareness for the veterans, just for Veterans Day on the 11th. And so we're supposed to turn the green light, and we all can do the same. And it's just, this is a notification that the city will participate. Did you have a green bulb, you said?
I followed a bulb. Right, I have one, but...
One of us put up there.
We'll put some up there tomorrow.
Can we, can we go back to that first? We can go back to that number 17, please.
Okay.
I move that we respond, we don't respond to the dismissal of the cause of bill.
Okay. So your motion, Jay, would be that it's not warranted to meet an executive session?
It's not warranted. Yeah, I feel it's not warranted.
And you approve the action taken?
Yes. I approve the action of the three nays of what we did.
So then I think if Jay's making a motion, you'd have another vote and see what happens? All right, I'm up there.
I, I, I prove that it's over with and need a donut scepter appeal and move on. That's pretty much all.
I guess I thought, being as we said nay already, that that's canceled. It doesn't?
Yeah, I, I think what Jay is saying, I think it canceled her motion. But I think he's saying to make the record clear, that he would like to make a motion that it's not warranted to meet an executive session and that you approve the action taken.
And we approve the action taken.
So that there's a clear record, that it's not left hanging, that somebody says it wasn't addressed.
I see what you're saying.
I mean, you defeated the motion that was made, but...
So it's not warranted to meet an executive session, and what's the last part of that?
And to approve.
To approve the disciplinary action taken, or the action taken.
So that means like, you're like...
You don't go further.
We won't go no further.
Like, that the council's okay with what happened, like, is that, is that what I'm getting at?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we made the motion.
Whoever votes approved of what we did or what happened, the action.
Okay. We have a motion on the table by Jay. It's in half support. I'll second it. Seconded by Carol. Okay, so further discussion or clarification? Okay, all in favor of not, that the... I can't really help it. Go ahead. Jay, read it all out again. Read what you got. Say it again. Don't, my notes are all messy. I want to say it clearly. Do you have something that says what you were, the appeal? Okay. The appeal is not, it is not warranted to meet an executive session if the council approves the action taken. Summarize it correctly. Okay, we have a motion by Jay and a second by Carol. Any other discussions or questions? Offer vote all in favor of Jay's motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
It's you two as nay. Carol, it's, I mean, Steve, it's Lexi. That's what we need. Carol and Jay, we're affirmative?
Yep.
There's a three to two motion carries. Further clarification? We were talking about the Veterans Affairs Lights. Sounds like Kelly and Scott will figure out some way to bring it out. I don't know that it really requires action, other than if you did not approve of such representation. We would not ask them to do so. The letter is there from Kayla and Ginger.
Yeah, call it the one light, believe one light bulb.
Are they, are they giving a rights down here than do light bulbs?
I know they were in Primgar, I believe Primgar last week, and Sheldon Radio had it also. But there's been nothing, to my knowledge, anyway, there's been nothing down here, so. Are they going to give us the downtown business people what this or...
I don't know who else got this. If everyone does, it's a say necessarily. It's just to the city, I think. Can any other business get one they don't have? Town Fire Department get one?
So where are we going to put these green lights, Carol?
I think for your residency, it's like your front porch.
Yeah, similar to entryway of your house or business.
So do we need to check if they're written or available, or you don't?
He has one.
We have some green lights. I was just going to put them in the walkway there or something.
You did find some work, you got more then, or?
Well, I think there's some old, old Christmas those that we can use.
Okay, so they're not bringing the lights?
No.
Just to...
Oh, yeah, I thought maybe they were doing some of this.
They're definitely Sheldon, they were handing them out.
Yeah, they were giving one, yeah, one to a family or a household anyway.
But they were doing it on their own. Sheldon themselves were doing it.
Why is that?
O'Brien County Veterans Affairs.
I thought some at the courthouse, yeah.
So it's from the main office. So it says, "They encourage individuals and other businesses to join us by changing one light bulb in the entryway of your house or business to a green bulb. By shining a green light, we let veterans know they are seen, appreciated, and supported." So it's just an awareness thing for just this week, through June 13th.
I make a motion to put the green lights in City Hall.
Steve is seconded by Carol. Questions or discussion? Councilor vote, all in favor of honoring the O'Brien County veterans with the Operation Green Light this week at City Hall. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All ayes. Motion carries. Okay, you're at 19. Open opportunity to address the council.
I just have a question. By your action that you took for not addressing her grievance, does that mean that the city, that the mayor and/or Scott or supervisor has the right or the ability to now hire and fire any employee without council approval?
Well, I think the motion that was made incorporated approval of the action taken.
The action was taken first. So, yeah, translate that. In other words, simplify it for stupid people like me that can't. Does that mean...
So the handbook does not require anything from the council. The city clerk description of the job is, is the only spot that it says in there that the city clerk's actions in hiring or dismissing is subject to council approval. So it doesn't specify when or how, doesn't say anything further on that. The handbook provides that there's a policy for disciplinary action. It doesn't say that that has to come through the council. It doesn't state that it has to go in any order. So the, the motion that was made approved the action that was taken. So that encompasses the council approving the disciplinary action that was taken.
So another, so basically, what I hear you saying then is that Brenda or Scott can fire somebody at any time she want, he or she wants?
I'm saying that the council still has to approve of that, that it's still presented to them.
So she can take the action, but the council still has to approve the firing?
Yes, I think at, at some point, the council has to approve the action taken.
And that was done with this motion?
Correct.
Yes. Interesting, okay. Because I think, in my opinion, that's going to create a very toxic work environment without, if the employee doesn't have that protection.
If any employee has any protection in Iowa, state by Iowa.
Oh, that's if you don't have a written, written, written contract or a written, uh, what's the term?
There's a handbook. I mean, there's, all companies have a handbook. There's a handbook. I mean, there's, all companies have a handbook unless you're working for a carpenter, pound of nails that doesn't have a handbook, but we have a handbook.
Sure.
And, and the handbook is pretty specific. The city.
The handbook that you looked at, John?
Yeah.
Is not the current handbook. So some of the citations that you quoted are not in the current handbook.
Doesn't approval normally imply first action? I mean, if my kid goes and steals a candy bar and they get caught and then they go back and, and they pay somebody the money for the candy bar. So they kind of got approval after they did something wrong. Doesn't approval sort of suggest an order?
I mean, I think the handbook is very clear that there are many different ways the city can handle any disciplinary action, any termination that they want to handle. I don't think it is in there as specific as to who that ultimately has to come from. I think that there are grievance procedures and procedures in place to review that. I don't know if this is something that the council will wanna clarify between the handbook and the city clerk description. We also obviously have a city clerk who's doing more than just the city clerk role. I don't know if there's a specific listing of his job, so I don't know if that's something else that the council may want to review. But the, the handbook is very clear in acknowledging that any action can be taken and there's a procedure to review that. And the council can review that and decide if it should be reviewed further or not.
Shouldn't the council be, you know, say it before it happens or no?
I, I don't see that that's required.
Okay.
I'm not saying that that may not be something that wants to be discussed and be clarified differently, but from what we have in the handbook and how that's set up, it's not specified though. And it was, it was more specific in that aspect in the handbook that John looked at. So I don't know what in, went into making those changes when the handbook was revised.
But can you say when that was revised?
No.
I know the last update was what, July sixteenth? So it's revised after, or before then or after? Nothing?
We just did some.
Some of February sixteenth.
I think two, I think ten is made in twenty twenty-two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But we didn't touch any of those.
Right.
Okay. You addressed your major points.
Yeah, I, I got the answers.
Okay.
Can you, can you provide me a copy of that handbook? A copy of the new one? The one apparently is old, but I don't know if all the employees have. Do they have the new version?
I have.
You have a copy of the new version? Okay. Then I'll, I'll get it from her. Nevermind.
Uh, two reports, which we've got reports here. Do you have anything separate from what we let down and get along this highway or?
No, I don't.
So do you have anything else you wanted to add separately?
Nope.
We have been reading meters, doing locates, pulled some, pulled the water meters out of the football fields so they could blow off the lines. Dug and set transformers in basements by Lushers and, um, behind my house and. Took all the old decals off the old ambulance. Turned water on and installed new radio water meter at two twenty-five South Main Street. Did some repairs on the street sweeper, picked up branches, changed injectors at the well. Pushed up tree pile, replaced curb stop riser at two oh three North Main Street. Had some fire calls. Uh, brought pulling ice shackles to TCA. Some bike back down and sell one at the lagoon. Pulled water meter at two twenty-three North Main. Set up new water sewer email for lab reports and testing. Rich passed his water test with the DNR.
Oh, thanks.
And before the person with the water license got everything sent to them and. But when Chris was, when Chris left, we just had it sent to Whitney and me. But now it's just gonna go to, we just set up a water sewer email and everything's gonna go to that.
I mean, was it, that's not his big test, is it?
He's got his water license.
So that's what that, okay.
Yep.
How did Josh do? Or he doesn't get that taken?
He did not pass it today.
Oh, he took it today?
Yep. He was close. DNR came and inspected. He just, we haven't got the report back from him, but it just sounded like a few little, you should do those kind of things and whatnot. I think it went pretty good. Took an electric meter box loose. It's like it's hiding behind on four ten East Day. Disconnected and reconnected power for electricity since at three oh eight South Mickley. They put a new meter socket on. Started organizing at the watershed. Picked up the rescue van from Sebasma. Dropped off and picked up barricades for the fall festival. Did reread, reread of meters and the ones that had issues and we fixed some. Jaren talked to me and working with him, they might buy. We got a thousand KVA transformer that was bought for the elevator, I think in twenty sixteen and it was the wrong primary voltage. And so it's pretty much a big paperweight for us. Partly might be buying that. And did the garbage. Fixed Mueller's water riser. I was sticking up about six inches. He was afraid he was gonna hit it with some trailers or something. So we got it down to ground level. Pulled primary wires at Lushers, pulled secondary wires at Lushers. Pulled primary wire in the alley between Broadway and Grossbeck. Pulled secondary wire in at Foreman, uh, Foremans. Pulled surface drop in at Foreman, set transformer at Lushers. Set transformer in alley between Broadway and Grossbeck. Terminated wire on pole by, uh, Lushers. Fastened riser to pole by low station. Hung bracket cut out and arrested for primary feeding Lushers. Cleaned out grease, or cleaned old grease out and re-greased digger truck pole claw. Cleaned leaves and gutters.
I have a question about leaves. I'm kidding. I don't know what town it was, but it was brought to my attention. I, I wouldn't say maybe Alton or something like that. They have like this thing, like every once a week right now, they let, um, residents like blow their leaves on the street and they have this big ol', I don't know, like, I don't know what it is, but it blows in the back of their, you know what I'm talking about though?
Yep. I talked to some guys last week and he said for.
I mean, it's very, like, we have a lot of elderly people at this, it's kinda, I don't know, but driving out to the lagoon or the dump, your leaves are gonna fall all out and.
Well, they do have a leaf pickup day though, don't you? Or did you? Was it just these last couple of months?
Right. But I know what Lexi's talking about and you did have.
I, I inquired about him.
Yep.
The guy's gonna send me what he's got for used ones and he said new ones are anywhere from fifty for, that's fifty thousand just for one that's you pull behind and then it blows in a truck or all the way up to a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the truck.
I mean, it's kinda nice. It's something that we're not flogging up this sweet, sweet birthday, whatever you call that thing.
Well, even the storm sewers, too. You keep the leaves out of that.
Right. I was kinda sweet.
Several, several of them that has something like that. I think they have one that you can drive. Where it's actually got the brush on the front and then it blows it into a, I believe it's a tank on the back.
I don't know. I think it was like Alton or something when I saw that thing. I don't know. This guy was just, and the residents, you know, did it. And I'm like, oh, maybe we should look into something.
I looked, I emailed like three different companies last week and just to see.
Yep.
What it cost. Okay, much more left than, made the leaves out of that. Veterans Memorial, let's fill it back in again. Worked on some transformers. Looked at ordering some poles and we did find out that we can get whatever we pull we want from the R E C and, um, Primgar. So we're just gonna go that route instead of buying a bunch of them and set. And Doug, Doug and Greg today, or, and today. And they did work on getting, um, today they pretty much worked on getting the M O R, all that stuff transferred to Rich's computer, the tablet they use to do chores and everything for the water sewer is gonna be on that computer we got. They're just working on getting all that switched over. So we got.
Nate?
Since I'm thinking of it, we still have light fixtures for wasps. And I know, and Kelly said they looked in the attic some day when they were up there and they don't really see anything. Basically every fall you start, you start collecting up their fluorescents like those flat ones. They just start collecting out there. Occasionally one escapes and they shot back into. So I don't know if we need to get an exterminator sometime or what need to do there.
Wanna get that?
No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I don't know if that P and R or whatever in Sheldon, if they do that or not. If they just do spray around hoses inside.
Is there all these wasps that?
They, they end up in our light fixtures.
In these?
In the, in the use, fluorescent ones up there.
In the back.
Oh, up by there. Okay. Huh.
So, yeah, I don't know. Like I said, they, they haven't seen anything in the attic. I don't know if they're finding a route directly from outside into the fixtures or.
Well, geez Nate, what'd you do to them? I'm just kidding.
Mad.
Basically, basically we wait till spring or it looks like they're all dead and tap it. And then we'll pull it and shock, shock back. That's, I mean, that's been a ongoing thing for several years.
Maybe call it exterminator.
Well, I wonder if that guy does that. He's good, the one that's from Sheldon. We've had him, but I don't know if he does this.
P and K.
Yeah, oh, P and K. Is it P and K?
Yeah. Yeah, we have rebound them too.
Yeah, they're good. It's him and her now. You have a jiggle?
Anything else from, anybody heard it? Ryan, do you have anything? Did you bring our taxi mobile outside?
Hot.
Did you bring that?
No, I forgot, but, uh, so, yeah, we have the, the command slash rescue unit all redetiled for the fire department now. Have it pretty well in service. We're reworking one of the cabinets for our grain bin rescue equipment to go in.
So do you like take that like to just do like if somebody can't get a hold of your grandparents, like, you know, like, so they don't have a polyamyls? What do you, what, I'm sorry.
So.
Like, so they don't have polyamyls, you'll just go check on them type thing or what?
There won't be an ambulance, there won't be a cat in there, there won't be.
No, nothing. Okay.
We, we pulled the cat and everything out, so, yeah.
Got it.
I mean, it's more for like our specialty stuff we need that.
Yeah.
We used to just have sitting at the fire station because we had nowhere, no trucks that didn't fit in. And now we can, that would be the truck that goes all the time and that truck will have the specialty stuff and.
No, no. We don't own jobs like we own, I draw a rescue tour.
Oh.
Okay.
You're gonna sign up for it.
Yeah.
No, I don't think they want me. I'll drive too fast. I'll crash. I'll crash. I'll crash it.
Well, that's why we have speed governor.
There you go. Is he getting your handle?
How do you get that thing going people there?
Oh, it'd be surprised.
Is that diesel?
Yeah, it's a diesel. So, so, yeah, we have the new, the new rescue operators in service. Have the old ambulances in service. I met with Gene and Carol about fire contracts because they auto renewed in July. So we're getting in to, um, meet with the townships about our fire contracts. And possibly going over that. Also met, met Jared Johnson to start working on our, uh, city B O P plan, so. So I'll probably be getting hold of everybody to start moving forward on that again.
What are you gonna do with the chief's truck and all that?
Uh, we have a graveyard behind the building. So.
It's getting big.
Yeah. So, yeah, we're, we're still in the process of taking equipment off both of the trucks. So it's just only half so many hours in the day.
Oh, yeah.
I think once those are all ready to go, I'm probably gonna call Big Iron and get rid of a bunch of stuff.
Okay.
Might even wait till we get our new thing that's supposed, we're supposed to get in December, I believe. Maybe put our other.
Maybe April, you know.
Tell me.
They tell you.
So we'll see if that holds true.
Okay. Did Maria run?
Uh, no, I think.
Do you have anything else on behalf of the ambulance or library? I have not heard. Have you heard? Is there anything about search for the director?
No, she said they had, I bet you said one. Their guy has, they wanna give them a few more hours than what she had. So, but not full time. But they're thinking maybe like, might be eligible for benefits. They might go to thirty or thirty-two. So, so that person. As much as I know on that.
Eric, any other committees met recently? Last meeting? Some probably need to meet. We have, um, all the rich champs to celebrate on finance and economic development. Yeah, that one first, the land situations. So, anything else?
Do we have a copy of that building permit that I can look at?
Yeah, that's on board. Okay. I, when we're, when we're done, I'll get, make a copy.
Well, I wanna talk about it because there's a major mess up in the building permit. Somebody signed a building permit that was not permitted to and we're having a big mess with it now.
What about that? You, Carol?
No, it's you.
Me?
You signed the building permit off for somebody to do something legally not, not permitted in the book. And now we have all these people going, well, I want my fence like that. I want my fence. And you can't do that. There was only two people that were assigned, assigned building permits at the time, Gene and, and me. And you wanna talk about derelicts and duties, you know? You know, you, you threw us in a big spot and a big problem. We can't do that. You signed a permit that wasn't right.
My dad signed it for me.
Yes, he did. What was the one for? What, is this the one for, um, that one should be the, the bound, the Ben guy?
Yeah.
Did you sign with Ben Taylor's?
Yeah.
Yeah. Somebody said that it was signed off that they could build fence any way they wanted.
That's the one where they asked you if they could go to the property line? And I know you had that text, Steve?
I responded to Lexi and said that...
Two feet?
Her, yeah. Her question was is that they could put up a fence against, against the other person's fence. And I said yes, but it has to be two feet away from the property line.
Yeah, and...
That person came in to get a building permit or what did they do?
No, they had the building permit.
They had the building.
And if you look, I think it was like supposed to be fifty-six.
Somebody changed or something.
I signed the original permit, so.
The building permit was changed or they just did what they wanted to do.
It says on here, Lexi Murphy approved new bound or...
Yeah, because originally it was either fifty-six or fifty-eight inches from the property line.
I just, I asked Steve a question and that's what I texted them back. That's all I did.
Well, we have a big problem because it's not proper fence. And now the neighbor, other neighbor is trying to...
So they didn't, so they didn't follow the building permit?
No.
Because Scott, they talked about that.
The three of us talked about it because you asked us to stay at that one last one. Yes. And then it's like, in the ordinance, it said that they got permission from the people and they had a written thing, then they could have. And I think they had that letter and they, Cody and Whitney signed it or whatever, that they could go up, bump up to their...
They have, they have not brought a letter in yet.
They, see, the problem is, is...
Yeah, I know what the problem is. Because then if one neighbor does it, then the next neighbor is going to expect to do it.
That's what's happening right now. And I stopped and talked to Cody's wife. And their fence is back two feet off the line. So actually, that other fence should be four feet.
Two feet and two feet.
Two feet and two feet, so. But now they're going to use the existing fence. So I'm saying, do they have to go to the zoning and planning commission to get a variance to use this fence? Because there's four feet of plant that is, you know, two feet is Cody's and two feet is theirs that, you know what I mean? It is supposed to be open for the thing.
Probably so.
Yeah. So we can't just go ahead and tell people they can do whatever they want.
No, but they knew they had to get a building permit.
Yeah, building permit, but if it was, it isn't proper. The building permit isn't proper.
Right, but they specify on the...
They were told that they could use the fence as their fence.
Yeah, so we got it.
I mean, so if they bring that letter in, then what?
I still think they have to get a variance, don't they? With the zoning and planning commission.
And then, and the city ordinance is that the, if the, and I got to go back and find it because I have it marked at home or something. We have that big book at home that we were provided. If they get written permission and they all sign it, then they can do it. So that, so Cody and Whitney sign that piece of, sign that they could and they all, Taylor and Ben did, then they could butt up to their fence. So if Cody then gave them permission, they can do that. So that's what they did. Cody and Whitney gave them permission to go butt up to their fence, so they...
And they got the paper.
And they brought that in here?
They brought that paperwork in here.
They asked me where they needed to send it and I told them they needed to put it, bring it to the city office, put it in their drop box.
And it's in here.
And I was like, okay.
It should have been in your building.
So they violated the code.
Yeah, and right now they're breaking the code by build a fence isn't until you get that. And then we got the neighbor the other way is doing the same thing, you know? We got to watch what we do on these building permits because you get the, well, kindergarten's here, well, he did it, I can do it, you know?
Yeah, we're moving forward on that. We, I mean, with the other one, I did have to approve that one because we located for one and so the next door neighbor. But we have had other people down wanting to do fences and, I mean, hold them to the ordinance, the two feet, two feet from the property line and...
Yeah, so from now on, we're going to have to...
Right, right.
Now, why did the planning and zoning do that two feet? It used to always be right on the property line.
Well, the reason is it's supposed to be able to maintain.
Because it used to always be property line, you know?
As long as the neighbors agree.
Yeah.
I think, I think the fence looks good because whoever, I mean, then you don't have to go and bring your, walk your mower around and mow. I mean, otherwise people forget, look at the rental house on Cannon Street that has that white fence. They mow the inside, but the outside of that mow, it's always growing weeds. And when, right across Mr. Trump, they, you don't, they just let them go to the... I mean, we should have just let, you know, because nobody remembers to go outside their fence and mow and they just grow up. It grows.
Couple sections of land, a couple sections of land on the ground.
It's got more than weeds, it's a problem. Yes, the good neighbor provision is what you're speaking about.
Yeah.
Maybe I go mow it for him. Let's just watch, you know, building permits. Because, you know, I got neighbors going, why does he build that fence like that? And stuff like that, so.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I have a comment. I think the way Whitney's termination was handled is appalling. Especially when we could have given her the respect of a following handbook and evaluation and talked to her face to face. And I was a little disappointed when I met with Scott and the Thursday before, asked him if we could have a meeting with him and Carol and I. And that Thursday evening, he told me no and we were just going to move forward with termination. I know Whitney sent her response. And I read through that. And I read through the termination and the reasons for the termination. But I still think we could have done a better job of talking with our employee and handling this before it got to this point. That's all I have to say about that.
I'm going to add to that, that I was not very happy that I got a phone call from work, at work during work hours of this happened. Like, this should have been something that should have came to the council before this came to this. Like, we should have not been getting a phone call at nine o'clock in the morning saying this is what we did. I mean, we did it differently for the past employees that we all met and made a decision. And they got to say what they had to say before all this. And then this one, I understand her job wasn't appointed position, but the council still is in charge, that we should have all been in the loop before getting a phone call on this.
Can I ask a question, Tisha? What else, what's controlling the employee handbook or the ordinances?
I mean, the ordinances provide and the code provides that if it's not delegated elsewhere, that the code controls. So, I mean, the handbook is a delegation of disciplinary power as well as other items.
So you're saying because both say something similar?
I'm saying that if it's not specified that it's delegated in another way. So if it's not set out in a different practice, if it's not addressed somewhere else, then whatever is listed in the code is what would it be?
So in this case, the handbook is controlling?
I would say that the handbook is a delegation of powers and yes.
Okay, so if the delegations are slightly different in their words and you talked about specificity of when approval happens, then there's a difference in how those two documents present that? Which one would be controlling or would it matter?
I'm not sure if I'm fully understanding your question, but I mean, if, if the code allows for a delegation of authorities, so you delegate that in the handbook, then what the handbook says would be controlling in those situations. Okay, council comments additionally? Well, you were giving your statements, so I think you two left, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, the need would entertain motion to adjourn. Oh, second. There's any further, I would call for all in favor of adjournment to say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say nay. Adjournment seven thirty-eight PM.